This conference will now be recorded.
Hello to everyone who's listening live and tuning in later. My name is Eli O'Sullivan Kurtz. I am the operations specialist at Northland Neighborhoods Incorporated, and we are hosting this virtual town hall with Councilwoman Heather Hall and Councilman Kevin O'Neil. Thank you both for joining today. I know we've got a pretty full agenda today, so I'll go ahead and pass this off to the two of you for introductions and getting us started.
Thank you. It's been a long time since seeing everybody, so I'm glad we were able to do this. We're still working, believe it or not, but with the virtual necessities now versus the in-person, Heather and I got together and thought, well, we've got to see all the people we used to see every month, or at least two or three times a month. So we decided to try this virtually for... And I think Heather and I are both agree we're going to try to do this every Monday at 10 o'clock. So this should be a regular weekly occurrence, and we hope to be able to get you up to date on some of the things we've been working on and some of the things that are going on, especially about the coronavirus and such. So we've invited the mayor, and we've got Rex Archer, our health director, here. We're just... It's trying times, we all know that, and we want to keep you in the loop as much as we can. So I'd like to hand it over to Heather, who's going to talk a bit, and then we'll introduce the mayor as soon as he's done.
Quickly, before Heather... Heather, before you jump in really quick, I forgot to mention something to folks who are listening. The chat is available if you have any questions or comments for the councilors. Just put those in there, and then I will announce those whenever we have scheduled time to answer some questions. So back to you, Heather. Great. Well, thank you very much for hosting this. Northland Neighborhoods is a great partner and will always remain a great partner for all of us in the Northland. But we aren't getting to use them the way we want to use them to help us help you because of this new environment they're in. And we're so grateful that they have suggested to do this with... Last week, we did it with Chief Smith, and today, we're doing it with Councilwoman Neal and I, where we can just say, let's start getting back to business. And the business is, how are we doing helping the first district? And the way we do that is by hearing from you. And if we don't hear from you, we don't know how we can be helping still. And there's lots of things we can still be doing. And the way we do that is to talk to you. This might be an unconventional way to talk to you, and we're so grateful that over 30 people have already signed in to be here today. That's good news. That means that you're interested and you're excited about moving forward and getting things done. So what we're asking you today, first of all, is do exactly what Eli said. Go over to that right-hand side. You'll see a little talk bubble. Click on that, and it'll say chat. And you go down below, you type in what you want to say, and then he will ask those questions throughout the conversation this morning. And we're only going to hopefully have this for about an hour on Monday mornings. And you all chime in, please, on the side over there on the chat. Say, we don't want to do Monday mornings. We want to do Monday at whatever time, or we want to do whatever time. Tell us what your preferences are. We'll do the majority of what we believe is right. We're hoping Monday mornings works, because obviously 30 people thought it was important already this morning. Because we want to make sure we hear from you on a weekly basis. If this is what we have to do for the next few weeks, or, you know, whatever, then that's what we'll do. This morning, we have invited Mayor Lucas to come on and just give you an update on where we are and what he sees going forward with the COVID-19 situation. And then we also invited Dr. Rex Archer, our Kansas City Missouri Health Department Director, on. And he had another meeting until 11:00, so he couldn't get on until 11:00. So that's why we did 10:00 to 11:30 today, so that you could hear from him and/or ask him questions. So those are the two things. One thing I didn't do, which now, since we signed up to do this, we probably should have thought about that, is explain to you, or maybe he can do that, explain the difference between the recommendations from the Clay County Health Department and then what Kansas City Health Department is doing, and how the two work together, and why we fall, if you live in Kansas City, Missouri, under Kansas City, Missouri Health Department guidelines instead of Clay County. So that might be something that we can touch on today. And if you have further questions, we can always invite Gary from the Clay County Health Department also onto one of these calls next week. But our hope is that the mayor has arrived, and I can't tell yet if he has arrived on the call. So until he does get there, what we would like to say is, how can we help you? How can we try to turn our first district problem solving into a meeting kind of like this for the time being? Maybe we can invite our public works and our water and our parks and our planning department on a call just like this, and they can then give you an update on where they are. And we'll just kind of do business as usual in an unusual way, if that sounds like something people would be interested in. So I think there's a few questions, and Eli, if you'd like, we could start with some questions until we hear whether the mayor's on or not. Thank you so much.
Certainly, that sounds good. So I know the first question is from... It's more of a statement from Henry. Wanted to let people know the statues are being placed on the bluff of the Choteau Fountain. So it sounds like some good news for folks.
Yes.
And then a second...
Actually, if I may jump in, I don't know if Keith's on the call. Is Keith Nelson on the call? Let me look. I don't see his name on here. Okay, well, yes, the pictures are amazing. And you know what? I know we're in this bizarre situation where we're not supposed to go out, but, you know, if you just get in your car and take a drive and drive over there to the Choteau Fountain, you will be amazed at the transformation that is taking place over there. It's such a testament to the hard work by Keith Nelson and Dick Davis and so many other people who are really striving to make that amazing monument to honor Francois Choteau. So just take some time, get out in the fresh air, roll down your windows, drive over there, and then maybe go through the McDonald's drive-through and get a Coke, and just see how great it is that the work is really being accomplished. And this is really a testament to all the hard work by Keith and so many others. Thank you, Henry, for bringing that up.
Yeah. Thanks to the workers for putting that together.
Eli, while I... Before the next question, I was just going to...
Kevin, your audio is cut out for me. I can see there's input, but I'm not hearing anything. Yeah, I think maybe it's better now.
Are you hearing me now?
Yes.
Okay. I was just going to say there is a pop-up testing going on at the old Sears building or the old Burlington on Antioch Mall, where the Antioch Mall was. Behind the Burlington store, there's a downstairs entry into the parking garage, and the testing is going to be taking place there. It starts at 11:00, and I think it goes till 4:00 or 5:00, doesn't it, Heather? So I encourage anybody that would like to be tested, feels they have a reason to be tested, please make your way over there. It's important, and I don't believe we've had enough testing in the Northland, because right now, the results are pretty low. So this might help us, you know, make decisions based on opening the city at certain times and phasing it in. So I just asked everybody to check in on that and see if they do feel like they want to be tested. This is a good time to take advantage of it.
Certainly, yes. So another question that we have come in from Richard Hurtig. Revenue sources such as sales tax and earning tax will not be in line with the current budget estimates. At what point in time will the revenue deficits be addressed?
Heather is on the finance department, and I think they've addressed that in their committee. Do you want to answer that, Heather?
Sure. You know, Richard, thank you for the question. That's really critical, important. We don't know what the last... What this three-month period is really going to look like, but what we have decided is we need to have weekly meetings from Tammy Queen, our finance director, and she's telling us how the numbers are looking, and that's going to help us make some decisions, you know, the good and the bad and the ugly decisions of how we're going to go forward with revenue being down the way we just unfortunately know it's going to be. So we will... Richard, if it would be okay with you, I have that finance committee on Wednesday, and I'd be happy to ask some further questions and bring back some data if you'd like to do this next week, and I will share that information and tell you what exactly the steps are, how we're going to do that, because we're going to have to pull back on some of the things that we have done if the revenues continue to drop the way we believe they are. But the other thing is, is we need to find out, and that's why we asked the mayor to be on today, how we can start getting back to business in certain segments so that we can start driving up revenue.
And I see now that the mayor has joined, so welcome, Mayor Lucas.
Good to see you all.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here.
Happy to be with you.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor.
And apologies for the delay. I'm at City Hall and was talking to the city manager about some of our important needs to still carry out public services and public safety and all the work that you would expect. I am happy to just talk for just a minute or two and then take your questions, if that works well for you. I want to say, first of all, thank you to Councilwoman O'Neal and Councilwoman Hall for creating the opportunity for us to be together today. As Councilwoman Hall just indicated, we continue to recognize that there's an important balance we need to strike in what we are doing, which is addressing our real public safety, public health needs, but also the need for our community, both as a business matter and frankly, just as a life and social matter, to also move to kind of a next phase. And so we're working now on what our phases to reopening are. And one thing that I'm heartened by and that the press will absolutely never report, because it's not how they roll, is the fact that I've had some very productive conversations, not just with our Northland council members, but also county commissioners in Clay and Platte counties about how we can try to work together on what phased approaches to reopening look like. It's my view that even starting at the beginning of May, and certainly by the middle, we're getting to a point where a good chunk of our businesses here in Kansas City, Kansas City and the communities around us, will be reopened with good social distancing, much better social distancing. The other thing that we're trying to work hard on, and I know Councilwoman Hall, in her role on the Health Commission previously, had helped to get us invested in a testing and tracing program. And what that means for us is that doing more testing is important for us in Kansas City North and throughout the metro. But another thing that's important is that we have a better tracing program. What that allows is, if there is a future outbreak somewhere, we can see everybody who, let's say, is at business. We can trace them, give them tests, their contacts, and that's how you really stop an outbreak. And so, you know, I'm not just saying all of this to kind of bore you with what we're up to, but this is what the next phase looks like. A lot of what we've talked about throughout our country, our state, and certainly our city over the last month and a half, has been, okay, how do we really stop it? And that's been terminating activities, stay-at-home orders, et cetera. What's important for us next is that big next phase of, all right, how do we, unfortunately, live with this for as long as it will be around? And so that's what we're trying to get to and what we're really working on. So that's what's going on there. I had a meeting, by the way. You might have heard, another thing that was unfortunate from the press, was that we created a small business program, but then it's been very hard for us to kickstart. I had a meeting on Friday. I expect us to have a contract signed so that we can get more loans out to small businesses in Kansas City throughout Kansas City to be able to do that soon. So we expect to have more news and information for you on that. I know Councilwoman Hall and O'Neil send you email updates, and so hopefully, in our next one, we'll have a chance to add that in, too. So that's all I'll say for now. I could talk about a bunch of stuff going on in Kansas City, but wanted to make sure there was time for questions. And I know your meeting doesn't last forever, so I'll stand ready for that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate it. Just to kind of give you some perspective, we have about 36 people on this call from the Northland who are very interested and wanting to work together to help make things as good as possible. So they've asked a lot of questions, and I think Eli's going to start giving those to you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed, thank you. So I'll go ahead and start off with a question, two questions really, from citizen Deborah Cole. Are you testing people for antibodies or active disease? And are you testing people that have no symptoms?
So we are not doing antibody testing yet. That's, for those who haven't caught it yet, I know in some other jurisdictions, I think Los Angeles, they had done antibody testing, and the goal there was to see how many in the population have had it before, how you can kind of make epidemiological predictions based on all of that. We have not been able to do that yet. Part of that's funding, part of that is kind of, we're not sure we're there yet on the need to do so and to assess. On testing people without symptoms, however, that is something that we're introducing this very week. And in fact, and I don't have a flyer in front of me, but Councilwoman Hall actually shared it yesterday, I believe, on Twitter, which was maybe other social media, and then I shared hers. We are doing testing where you can be asymptomatic. The goal there is to actually make sure that more people are getting in with testing opportunities. And so you can... We'll have more information on that to share with you, that we're starting that process now, too.
I guess I'll just say it is from... The testing is from 11:00 to 4:00 today on the backside of Sears at Antioch Crossing. And it's just testing for, if you have the disease, it is for seven-year-olds and up, Kansas City, Missouri residents, and they will do a little bit of pre-screening to make sure you're where you are on your health spectrum, and then they'll do the test for you, and it is free.
Thank you. Wonderful, thank you. Want to move on to the next question here. This is a related question from Richard Hurtig. What is the status of antibodies testing? The virus test will only be of value if the person currently has the virus but does not address people that did have the virus already.
So on the antibodies testing, you know, that's still... That's largely why we aren't actually evaluating the antibody testing yet. I mean, we're still trying to actually find folks that are suffering from COVID-19, try to get them into treatment, and then... And it does sound kind of anti-American or Big Brother-ish, but trying to trace their contacts. The reason to trace contacts is, that's really how you actually find outbreaks. That's how you can control for it. If people don't know that they were exposed, then they may go and interact with their family and, you know, any other number of folks. Whereas that's... If you have a good tracing and good testing program, that allows you to kind of stop those earlier. And, you know, we're trying to get to a point in society, and we will, where, you know, everything's going to be open at a certain point. And there's a debate now as to how soon or what have you. But removing all of that discussion, everything will be open, but COVID will still be around. And so that's why our strategy really is a test and trace, to make sure that if there is an outbreak, let's say at a, you know, a business somewhere, that you really can stop it in its tracks with those 10 or 15 people who might have been exposed instead of allowing it to spread more broadly.
Great, thank you. We have a follow-up question about the testing at Antioch Crossing. Marty S. asks, isn't that testing at Antioch Crossing by appointment only?
It is, I believe we do ask you to call in advance or to arrange it. And so I believe so, although, again, I don't have the form right in front of me. I think it's easier if you do arrange in advance. I think, as we've had other testing opportunities in the city, it didn't necessarily require. So Councilman Hall, are you...
Well, the flyer does give you a link that you can register at, but I believe they will take you. You might just have to wait a few minutes if there isn't a spot for you at that time. But there is a registration, and I will put it in the comments in the chat. It just says redcap.link/mocovidcc. I'm sorry, mocovidcc testing. So I'll put it on there, and you can click that link and register. But I can't imagine they're going to turn you away if you show up today. You might just have to wait a few minutes if there's somebody ahead of you when you get there. As long as you get there between the 11:00 and 4:00 timeline, yeah.
I think that's right. So thank you, Councilwoman.
Yes, I want to move on with another couple of questions here. First of all, I will share a statement from a citizen. Steve Olson just wanted to say thank you to trash and recycle collection folks. This is a job that's not fun in the best of times, and now that they risk infection to keep our neighborhoods functioning, they deserve our gratitude even more. I'm sure we all agree with that. Thank you to all those folks. And then a question here. This is... So with less than 1,000... Sorry. With less than one in 1,000 people contracting the virus in Kansas City and the surrounding counties, what is the basis for continuing the stay-at-home order for almost three more weeks? Also, I know several people in need of important surgeries but are not able to get them. When will this be possible again? This is a question from DeeDee Dewey.
So a few different things. So first, and I'll hit the last point of your question first. You know, in our stay-at-home order, and this was actually something that a lot of people were perturbed by, too, there are actually a lot of exceptions, right? And there are a lot of businesses that are allowed to continue to operate. One example is actually anyone in the medical industry, anyone in the dental industry. And so much of the fact that hospitals went to only essential procedures versus elective and that sort of thing wasn't actually limited either by Kansas City's order or the governor's order or anything of that sort. And I think a lot of those professional organizations will be reevaluating that. For example, you know, I had a dentist who reached out to me recently and said, well, we need to open again. And I said, well, we never actually closed dental establishments. Actually, anything that's kind of core to your health continues to be able to open. And so we would ask them to use every procedure possible to make sure people are safe. But the hospitals are in a position where they could actually have both elective procedures, checkups, any number of those things already. And so I actually probably would encourage them, because frankly, they know more about hygiene, sanitation, all that sort of stuff than I do, to go ahead and probably address those things now. In terms of the numbers that we are dealing with, and I'm remembering that you said one out of 1,000 or something of that sort. Sorry, I just lost my picture. The reason ongoing is that, as part of what we wanted to do, was always that two-week decline in the number of cases. There are different views in different places as to what we measured. Our health director in Kansas City is still finding that there have been some spikes in recent days, actually. And so we're trying to make sure that fundamentally, that we're kind of out of the woods before we remove everything. The other important point, and I can't say this clearly enough, and this is something where I think, no matter kind of your views on this, everybody's pretty consistently in the camp that we don't want to do one of these shutdowns again. I don't think it would... I think it'd be terrible for business, be terrible for society, all that sort of stuff. So that's why we're trying to make sure that we get it done right now. And part of that is making sure that we do what I call a soft opening or a responsible reopening that looks to businesses and stages, expands, make sure that we don't see a rapid increase in cases. So that explains kind of the policy approach as to why we do what we do. I'll note this, though, that everything we do is based on the most recent data that we have in Kansas City. So, you know, my head's not in the sand and just saying we're going to, by golly, stick with one way or the other, in the same way that I hope nobody else's is, because it really is dynamic on the ground. But, you know, right now, we have, I think, 97 cases in Clay County. There are about 330 in Kansas City south of the river and 30 in Platte. The reason that's interesting to you is because we have about 330,000 people in the Jackson County portion of Kansas City and about 130,000 people in the Clay County portion of Kansas City. What that means is actually, you know, 100,000 to 135,000, 330,000 to 330,000. The percentage isn't as stark as you might think between cases and infections in Clay County versus in Jackson. There are more in Jackson, but as a percentage matter, there's still a real issue for it. And so that's why we continue to try to make sure the solution is for all of Kansas City.
Wonderful, thank you. And I think this might be a nice segue into another question. You may... I know you've already answered some of it, but maybe a chance to elaborate. This is from Tammy Henderson. Mayor Lucas, can you give us an idea of what reentry will look like moving forward after May 15? Some may think we just go back to normal. I doubt that's the case, limited crowd numbers, et cetera. Also, just want to thank you on behalf of NKCC schools for all your support and cooperation as we navigate this unprecedented time.
Well, thank you for the question, and thank you, North Kansas City Schools, for all the work that you do. You know, I'll riff briefly and then get to your answer. But, you know, often, people describe Kansas City's schools by just one district. And I always love having the opportunity to really talk about all the great stuff that we're doing throughout the city in a number of our schools. And with North Kansas City School District being our biggest school district in Kansas City, Missouri, I thank you for all that you've done, too. In terms of what reopening looks like, yeah, I don't think... And, you know, no one is recommending, including the President of the United States, on down to anybody who's looking at this issue, nobody's suggesting that, yeah, day one, it's just reopen and everything goes back to normal. We'll have a phased process, where Phase 1 really looks to businesses that can allow for greater social distancing, being the ones that are opening first, good sanitation, sanitary practices, et cetera. And then the next step is businesses, personal services is usually what you call them, where people are working closer to one another and probably looking at them in a next phase, followed by, you know, schools having the opportunities to open again, where you have a lot of people who are close to each other, and then ultimately, those larger events. So unfortunately, if you're someone who's probably in the convention and tourism business, for example, that's going to be a tougher area than if you're somebody who's got, you know, a psychiatrist office, right? Where you can probably keep some distance in a number of things. And so, you know, those are the phases that we're looking at along the way. And a big part of it, and this is why, you know, we're talking to all of our different counties, that sort of thing, to make sure that we can try to communicate that as consistently as possible.
Wonderful, thank you. I want to get to a couple of questions that were asked a little while ago. First one is relevant directly to COVID testing. This is from Deborah Cole. The CDC has admitted that their testing kits were contaminated with the actual virus. Can we be assured that these testing kits are safe?
You know, I believe so. I, you know, I can't speak for the CDC. I know that our testing is largely regulated by the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and that our own health department, so it goes through a number of different safeguards to make sure that our testing is accurate, as accurate as it can be, mind you. And so, yeah, we're trying to make sure that we have all of that covered well.
Thank you, thank you. And then another question here, this one related to businesses and COVID testing, or COVID-19. What is... This is from Marty S. What is the status of parks? Is there any date set for reopening Penguin Park specifically?
You know, I believe now every... So our parks remained open, but we did close off different parts of all of our parks. I would assume that the parks are following kind of the same track that we're doing with fountains, which is that when the stay-at-home order is repealed, then everything in our parks should also be open. So at present, that would be the 15th of May. However, note that where there are bigger crowds, right, to the extent that we still have a crowd size limit, then the parks will probably comport with that in some sort of way. So that would suggest that where there's a lot of congregation and certain things, you know, we would not see that open as burly as everything else. But by and large, you know, our parks are still open. What you can do in them is change a little bit right now. Oh, and there you go. Terry Reiner just signed on and said, we have a proposed plan to phase in reopening. The grounds will be last. Thank you, Terry Reiner, our director of Parks and Recreation. So there we are.
Wonderful, thank you. So this question is also about reopening things that's a little more pointed toward small business. This is from Richard Hurtig. To better assist the small businesses, have the city or county considered an ambassador program to help small businesses work through the details of opening safe? A hair salon would be one example. Should both the employee and the customer have masks? The new health requirements are not a topic familiar with the small business owners. So just to reiterate, the question is mostly about if the city or county has offered resources or planned anything to help small businesses work through the details of opening safely.
You know, not nearly enough. I think one of the concerns is that neither the state, the county, or the city has actually released recommendations yet on reopening, which is unfortunate. We are, in my office, trying to, I think, accomplish that fairly soon. I think some of my staff are on a call with the health director this morning as we speak so that we can share and communicate that more. I mean, I think if there are critiques of what's happening now or has been happening for weeks, I think a lot of people want more communication, right? Most business people and individuals I know want to play by the rules and have consistent ones, but, you know, they may very accurately say, how can I play by the rules if I don't know what's happening? And so we will try to communicate, I think, as clearly as possible what our expectations for Kansas City businesses will be. I'm frankly trying to convince everyone else to, you know, to have similar ones so there's an easier communication issue. So one person can go on the news and say, hey, salons, this is a good idea. I mean, the problem is, we've got, you know, so many counties in our metro. We've got two... I mean, the problem is we've got, you know, so many counties in our metro, we've got two states. And, you know, if someone in Johnson County, Kansas gets on TV and says, this is what all salons should do, then I know a bunch of people on our side may say, well, this is what we need to do. And so that's the work that I'm trying to do early this week. I have calls with other mayors in Jackson County, calls with commissioners from Northland this afternoon. And so we're trying to communicate that in a clearer way. We will certainly be reaching out to business owners and how we can best accomplish that.
Thank you very much. I believe at this point, we have answered all of the questions that have come in. So for those of you who are attending, if you have any questions, the chat is open for you to post those. Otherwise, I'm going to pass this back off to the councilors for anything else they'd like to say before the mayor.
Great. Well, I just want to first say thank you, Mayor Lucas. Councilman O'Neill and I are thrilled that you took some time to answer questions from the Northland. There's a lot of questions and they vary based on where you are in the city, I think. One question that was proposed to us that I didn't have a perfect answer yet, and you may not either yet, but before you got on the call was, how are we going to manage our budget with the deficit that we know we already have, but then also presumably there will be more deficits months go by? How will that affect our city budget that we voted on in March? And what are our plans to kind of reallocate the funds in the budget to do what we need to do? And I had told him we'd talk about it during finance committee meetings, but I'd love to have you chime in on that as well.
Absolutely. On that question, I actually met with our acting city manager on that very topic. So Kansas City is somewhat fortunate with the fact that the beginning of our fiscal year is on May 1st. So I believe this Friday. And what that means is we've split some of the negative hits of what's happening. But that doesn't mean, of course, we're out of the woods. We'll have last year budget things to address, among other things. What I know the acting city manager is directing the finance department and directors to do this very week is to come up with a better plan as to what does an across the board cut as to each department look like. So they haven't finalized it yet, but consider something that is a across the board 5% cut for every department, right? Something of that sort that would say that, well, we need to save five. And I believe I saw the number somewhere, 5% of our general fund is something like $60 million, right? So finding those across the board savings and asking the directors to do those cuts themselves is probably going to be a step one for us. You've seen that some other jurisdictions have done more significant furloughs. I think the city of Altha, Kansas is one. One thing that is advantageous for Kansas City, Missouri, is that we have a more diversified stream of revenues from earnings tax, sales tax, property taxes as well. There are some cities, particularly on the Kansas side, that are really more heavily sales tax based. And that, you know, if you're not selling anything, then that will destroy you. And so, you know, we have that diversity in revenue streams, but we're also trying to come up with kind of that smaller percentage across the board approach to how we hit. Another important part of this for us is going to be the CARES Act, which was passed by Congress, signed by president. We're anticipating that up to $88 million could be coming to Kansas City, Missouri as a part of that. A lot of that will go to reimbursing public safety costs, health department costs, et cetera, and actually parks costs. It takes some money to, you know, pull down nets and those sorts of things. And so we're trying to make sure that we're looking at all those different revenue sources. But we're certain that there will be some pain with it. And we're trying to work with the departments more on a scalpel, scalpel approach at this point to make those cuts.
Great, thank you so much. Just since this call started, we have heard from the Kansas City Health Department that in fact, what I said earlier, I misspoke. We are completely sold out of spots at the testing facility at the Sears Antioch Crossing. What that means is that you can either be redirected to another location in Kansas City that's happening to do testing today, or you can wait and sign up for another testing. We're going to continue to do testing over the next three months. So we, this isn't a, this isn't a one and done. We will do more testing and we will have more. But if you missed signing up for the one today, I apologize, you cannot actually sign up for another. You can't just show up today. So they just texted me and said that that's not the case. So there are other locations and you can do other locations today or just wait and we will test. We will send out another information on where the next one will be and when and how to sign up for that one.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Heather. Well, I know, Mayor, you're, it's 10:44, I don't want to keep you. I know, I appreciate you giving us your time this morning. If there aren't any more questions, I guess we should let you go.
And by the way, I have to say, your council members are among the best at asking me the questions that you're asking. So don't worry if you have any questions this morning. Councilwoman Hall and Councilman O'Neill are always, are always good at getting me the hard stuff, so.
Well, that's a, that's a pleasant way of saying we're nosy.
Thank you, guys. It's good to spend time with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to the mayor for tuning in. We have a couple of questions that came in last minute here. I think the councilors should probably be able to answer them, but we'll see. So first question from Marty S. With the online orders and purchases that pay sale tax, is there a need to increase this?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Sure, I think the question is saying that there are certain online stores that charge sales tax for city residents. And of those storefronts that charge online sales tax, is there going to need to be an increase in that percentage in light of the pandemic and decrease sales overall?
Well, personally, I would, I would hope.
Oh, Kevin, I think you broke it out again.
That the Missouri Legislature looks at this a little closer now and in online sales purchases. Yeah, I keep going in and out, I'm sorry. My point was, I think the legislature has the opportunity to impose a sales tax on online purchases, which they don't have at this point. And I know there's several studies that show that could increase considerably tax base. So I don't know how we could do that. I might be, I did, the city can impose a sales tax on online goods. Did that come through?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Hello?
We can hear you.
So another question here. Is that your understanding, Heather?
Right, and that's not something we can just say arbitrarily, we're going to increase those prices on those taxes. That would have to go to a vote and that's not something we get to decide anyway, Marty. So you're all good. We're not, we're not going to raise your taxes without you having to say it, Marty, I promise.
Sounds good, sounds good. Another question here from Richard Hurtig. This is in relationship to the testing at Antioch Crossing. How many tests were available there?
Yeah, that's a really good.
I believe there was 150 is what I was, what I understood. They're doing, they're trying to get a total of 500 tests done in a three day period to send to the state. This, it was, this was, this project was organized by the state to generate 500 tests from Kansas City all over the areas.
Understood, thank you. A question from Jennifer Johnson, which may be similar to a question that was asked earlier. Is the testing for the virus and then PCR in parentheses or for antibodies to the virus?
Just the virus, correct. We're not doing antibody testing just yet.
Okay. Sounds good. And then last thing here before we move on to the next segment. There was just a comment earlier on from Jody Seamer that I wanted to make sure gets shared. They say, just wanted to share some positivity. The web new channel, Some Good News, hosted by John Kozimki, featured Kansas City's social distancing tailgating on his new show that goes worldwide. You can find the mention at six minutes and 56 seconds past the beginning of the episode. You can find the new shows on YouTube or Facebook.
Yeah, he's definitely some good news, that's for sure.
How are we doing on, has the, has Dr. Archer joined us yet? I don't believe he has.
No, Marcus is checking to see where he is. And so we're gonna see what that happens to, where we happen to do that.
I keep going in and out, so I'm not sure I'm being, I'm not sure I'm being heard or not.
You're just a little delayed, but we can hear you.
Yeah. Yeah. So it, I'm trying to think of, you know, transportation, I guess, just talking about my committee. I, we're, we're getting a lot of continued, continued work in the construction field. The KCI project is on time, on budget, from what I understand. I'm not sure what else we've really to report on at this point. That's, that's kind of all I have. What about finances? Is there anything in finance you'd see? We did pass the Northland Soccer Park. We have one more contract issued a vote on, but I think that's, that has been, the way has been paved for that to continue on. You know, I think the budget is going to be our biggest problem for the next three months, just figuring out how we're going to cut. And it's kind of difficult when you have to cut 5% from each department when you think of the, you know, the departments, the police, the firefighters, the Public Works and all these things that we're already limited on finances. And now we're going to have to redo those and cut those again. So I'm disappointed in that, but, you know, this is an act of God and we don't really have a lot of say in this. That's about all I have.
Yeah. Well, we believe Dr. Archer is going to be coming on soon. And if you have some more questions that you'd like to specifically ask to the Kansas City Health, Kansas City Health Director, please add those to the chat. And then also what I'd like to do while we have a few more minutes, I guess about eight or nine more minutes before he gets on, ask us some questions and things that you are wanting to see happen sooner rather than later. Some things that some of the Northland council people are talking about are ways we can tweak the opening up in the Northland to help manage, or not manage, but help kind of mirror what some of the other cities in the Northland are doing so that we can be commensurate with that. And I guess our questions to you would be, how would you feel if some doctor's offices opened? And obviously, everything would be appropriate with social distancing, masks, you know, gloves, all the kinds of appropriate things we know people need to do if we're going to go out in public. But what are some things you feel like you could see happening, opening earlier that wouldn't make you uncomfortable? To give us some ideas on, well, I'd be okay with the parks opening or I'd be okay with my doctor or my nail lady or my hair salon opening, but I'm not okay with a swimming pool opening. I mean, those kinds of things. What are, what are some things you're really concerned about opening and things you're not concerned about opening earlier to give us kind of some ideas? And then the other thing I haven't seen in the chat yet is, are you, just give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Do you want us to continue these meetings on Mondays? We won't do it for an hour and a half normally. Normally it'll be 45 minutes to an hour just to get your hot topics. But today we had to jockey and just with Dr. Archer scheduled us to start here at 11.
Hey, Heather.
Really liked to, yes.
I'm sorry, I, I was just wondering if, since Terry Reiner's on the, on the call, maybe we could ask her to give us an update. She had, she had texted in that they were, they're phasing a plan. And maybe she could just give us, if you're there, Terry, maybe you could give us a quick summary of how you're going to phase in?
Sure, I can talk a little bit about it. It has not been agreed yet from the mayor's office or whatever. But I can tell you it'll be kind of the reverse order of how we closed, what we did close. For example, tennis nets would go back up before playgrounds would. At the community centers, there'll be a limited amount of persons in the facility. We're probably looking at timed reservations. Cleaning schedules, of course, will be changed. You know, the parks and the trails continue to be open, will continue to request social distancing. And then the last things will be those common touch points that we don't have a good way to sanitize in between every use, which is some of the outdoor fitness equipment and playgrounds. And still working with the health department, CDC on what the, if, if the summer will help with that situation. Pools are still up in the air. You know, that may be limited because of budget in terms of how many pools we open. And then also just is there a way that we can do that? Working with several local jurisdictions and actually a national consortium of parks folks to try and present a plan that, that's doable.
Thank you very much, Terry. There was a question that came in while you were speaking from Marty S. And it relates to what you said about playground equipment. The question was, I'm curious how people feel about kids playing on playground equipment? And it sounds like the answer that you had already provided is that playground equipment is difficult to clean between use. So that's something that you're planning to phase in last?
That's true, that's true. And I see Deborah Cole's comment as well. And that's, that's all information we're working to get confirmation from the medical side of the equation. So, yes, that is true at this time. That could, you know, and as you guys know from, from everywhere, this is a constant, all day long, fluid decision-making process. As more information, more science, whatever. But we'll do, we kind of have a thinking base on the health department and in conjunction with the mayor's office who works with the city manager to make sure we're all kind of on the same page.
I would, I think, I think that's a, that's, Deborah's question is a good one. I have heard that sunshine kills the virus, but I think that'd be a good question for the department director. Because I, I haven't seen any verification of that, I guess. So I would like to see, I would like to hear his view on that.
Great, Terry, thank you for the update. That's really helpful. I guess I am, I'm sort of with Deborah on let the kids get out and be healthy because they need to get the sunshine, they need to get out and help. I mean, I don't know about you, I'm an obsessive compulsive mom. And when my kids get off the playground equipment, I make them use hand sanitizer and wipes to wipe their hands off after they do it. But, I mean, I can't control that everybody does that. But I'm that kind of a mom, and so I would wash their hands anyway. But I get, I get that we have to be as cautious as possible when it comes to that. So I think you're right. Kevin, we need to hear what Dr. Archer says about that. The one thing I will say though, in difference to what Terry has said, I agree that, you know, she's following the protocols set forth by our city. The one thing that's very difficult that we are finding is there's parks all around me and they're in Kansas City, they're in Gladstone, they're in Liberty, they're in North Kansas City, and they're in all of our cities and all residents go to all these parks. So it's very confusing when the park in Gladstone is a park in Kansas City across the street is no one. And so really having to walk a fine line to say, how are we going to work? How are we going to work here because you're doing it, but I'm not? People don't understand sometimes what city they're in.
Heather, I have a question, and this probably towards Terry. Terry, do we have a, do you have a plan in place for sanitizers or any kind of sanitizing stations at our parks? Because this is such a new day of, of understanding, you know, cleanliness. Is, is that something you have in your, in the works or in the future?
Internal or inside locations, yes. Internal or inside locations, yes, very much so. Outside is, is a lot more challenging. Handwashing stations are only somewhat useful, because they have to be refilled and drained so often, and they tend to, they're easily moved. So, but trying to do the best we can with hand sanitizer where we can. But unfortunately, you know, the best advice is probably bring it, and if you need it, let us know. But leaving it out for the general public's kind of a tough one.
You know, you're right about that, because then it's, you know, hey, it's on your honor. Are you doing it, or are you not doing it? At the job sites, I know at, we've been on several job sites lately, because outdoors, people are still working, thankfully. And at one job site, the contractor, the general contractor on the site made this makeshift washing station. He put out a folding table, he put out a bucket with, you know, where he could put water in it. And he has hand sanitizer, and he has a big bucket of wipes, and it's very clear there, and there's gloves. And he's saying, hey, everybody has to wash their hands when they come to and from. The job site are gonna eat, and then he goes back from the lunch break back to the job site. And they're very specific about it. I realize you can't monitor individuals like you can at a job site. But at least if it's offered or paid or it's available, those kind of things are helpful. So, thank you.
We've got a few comments here, just for the benefit of those who are listening without any sort of chat. We see, we had asked for thoughts and ideas about opening businesses, how people feel about different things. Administrator, oh, sorry, Tammy Henderson says, please let my hair salon open early. I'm getting more gray by the minute, sure we can all relate. Let's see here. Pamela Evans says, my chiropractor allows one person at a time with cleaning between patients. We're told to be on time and wait until we're called in. I don't see why my beauty shop couldn't do the same thing with one person per stylist, with space between stylists. Deborah Cole says chlorine kills a multitude of bacteria and germs, so the pool should be open, along with the sunshine killing viruses and sunshine promoting vitamin D, which boosts our immune system. Open the pools. Looks like there is a question here about specifically hair salons. Let's see, where did it go? Administrator says, many of us are in need of haircuts, don't see how that can be done while wearing a mask. How will that work? I'm not sure that's necessarily a question that the councilors can answer, but I'll give you the floor for it, I'll say.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a question for Dr. Archer, and those are the kind of things that we should be asking him. I can give you an opinion, and it's worth exactly that, so. Have we heard from Dr. Archer yet? Not yet?
No, I've texted twice.
Nothing.
I think the two of you will probably know if this is an appropriate question for you or for Dr. Archer. The question is, from reading the star of the 14 antibody tests, only three were accurate most of the time, and only one all the time. How valuable is this testing considering this lack of accuracy?
Again, personally, I, I'll defer that question to Rex.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured.
He actually just texted, and he's looking for his number, so he's calling in here in a second.
Okay, good, good. I, you know, I did-
So we have received a few, go ahead.
No, I, I was just, I was just gonna say, I'm, I, I was excited. One of the reasons we're talking, we talked to the mayor last week, is that all of us in the, in the Northland are concerned, we have so many jurisdictions that we rep, that we go through, and whether it's Clay County, Gladstone, Riverside, Clay Como and such. We're very concerned that there's gonna be multiple orders to open that have varying changes in dates. And so we asked the mayor to be, to, to be cognizant of that and help us. And he has committed to looking at opening certain things around the May 3rd. We're not sure what. He's coming up with a phase in, but I think he'll be, you know, it's gonna be hard, because, you know, whatever he, whatever we do, we're gonna be damned by some and, and, you know, praised by others. But there seems to be, you know, if Gladstone and Clay County is opening on May 3rd, it's kind of unfair to have a, have a business that's on the west side of North Oak closed, where he sees across the street his brethren is opening their shop. So we're trying to be aware of all the pratfalls that we face in this pandemic. But I, I am hoping that we can get a majority of people open early.
Wonderful.
That's all I've got.
So there's another question here, or comment, rather, from Pamela Evans. Says, my daughter lives in China. They took their daughter to limited playground time each day. They washed the child, sanitized clothes, doors, shoes, et cetera, when they came in. Sounds like offering up some best practices there.
Well, we're, to Kevin's point, we are, it is a fine line, and, and, you know, we've said this a million times. If you're the president, if you're the governor, if you're one of the mayors in this community, you're not gonna win. Because if you open early, people are gonna get sick. If you open late, businesses are gonna die. So there's not a good win to this, to this situation we're in. But what we do know is, we can't all live in our homes forever and not get out and do the things we need to do. There has to be a balance. And so that's our request to the mayor, is give us some grace up here in the Northland, where we have lesser cases, and give us some grace to at least be commensurate with what the other cities and the county are doing, so that our businesses can thrive and people can start doing what they need to do. We also know that people of certain categories need to continue to shelter in place where they are, depending on their, their health, their age, and their other status that is an issue to concern them, so they stay healthy. So it's not an easy one-off. You can't just say, do this and it'll work, or do that and it'll work. That's just unfortunately not in the position where we're in. So it's, it's, it's a tough call for everybody. And not, the, the problem is that what I might do is not what you would do. And because we neither one are gonna do the same thing, sometimes people are gonna go out. Like, when I go to the store, I wear my mask, and I wear my gloves, and there's people who are not wearing their gloves and their mask, and that's the decision they've made. You know, I can't judge them for doing what they're doing, because I don't know why they do what they do. And I know that I'm, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do, but only because, you know, I don't wanna, I'm a rule follower, so I'll do whatever you tell me to do. But I will tell you, at some point, like, like Tammy said on the call, I may break the curfew just to get my hair colored as well. So it's all, it's all good until it really affects my hair, and then we're gonna talk, so. But it is a serious thing, and we don't wanna mess around with people's lives, that's for sure. I think Dr. Archer is working on it. I think Marcus has called him, and they're trying to figure out how to get him looped into the call. He's having a little technical difficulty, but he's working on it.
For what it's worth, it may be a little easier to join by phone than by computer, if that's something that Dr. Archer has not tried yet.
Yes.
Thanks to everyone.
What phone number would you like me to come call?
Let me pull that up for you really quick. The phone number is 646-749-3122.
Okay, I'm texting him right now.
Yeah, there's an access code as well. It's nine digits, I can give that to you when you're ready.
Okay, ready.
Access code is 682-754-477.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, folks, for your patience, while we're working out these technical issues, of course, appreciate. Great, we appreciate your questions and comments, too.
You don't have to do any code, it's gonna bring up the one thing, it's gonna actually go to me.
Can you unmute Marcus? You know, I had a few people reach out on the chat, saying they liked a Monday, that this is better than nothing. So if that's the case, Kevin, how do you feel about if we can do this at 10 o'clock on Mondays?
Yeah, I'm with that, yeah.
Okay, it looks like Dr. Archer's arrived, so we'll let Eli introduce him.
Welcome, Dr. Archer. We're so glad to have you here today. Thanks for joining us. I know you had some technical challenges to overcome, so we appreciate you being here all the more. Can you, it looks like you are muted, Dr. Archer?
Yeah, I'm glad to be here, and this is my sixth meeting already today.
You are a popular man, aren't you?
Well, I don't know if popular's the right term, but yes. Yes, it is, it is a challenging time. And thank you, both of you, for, and Councilman Hall, and about being able to get the site up there at the Antioch. We really appreciate it.
We're happy to do it. And it's full, so obviously people wanted it. We're gonna let Eli, just so you kind of have a little backstory, Dr. Archer, we have about 40, or 35 or 40 people on the call, Northland people who have had questions. And Eli from Northland Neighborhoods is moderating the call. So what he's gonna do is, he's gonna ask you questions that people have reached out to you about, and give you an opportunity to answer those questions, but also give you an opportunity to say whatever it is that you wanna say that would be helpful. So thank you so much for calling in.
Oh, no, thank you. This is a great group, and I'm looking forward to the questions. Hopefully, I could even answer most of them.
So I know that probably the questions most relevant to you are going to be the questions that have been asked about testing so far. I'll go ahead and start off with those. So first question, are you testing people for antibodies or active disease? Are you testing people that have no symptoms? And if you are not currently testing for antibodies, what is the status of that plan?
So there was a, a nice review article, actually, in the Sunday New York Times, that talked about the fact that of the 14 different antibody tests that are out there, 11 of them are so bad that they in no way, shape, or form should be used. That their false positives or false negatives are unacceptably high. And even for the one that is out there, it is not a, what we call a quantitative test. And trying to answer this in a really quick way. The, we don't know whether having antibodies to this disease makes any difference in regards to whether you can get the disease again. And we certainly don't know whether, at what level, or how long immunity might occur. So as far as I'm concerned, and most public health officials across the country are concerned, the antibody testing is still for research purposes. And maybe in some communities, you could get a sense of the prevalence of the disease, but it doesn't measure disease in the last basically three weeks. You have to have at least been exposed for about three weeks before you would have enough antibody to even be positive. So right now, whether somebody has antibodies or not, other than for research purposes, isn't gonna change our public health approach, and it won't change the clinical care approach. So no, we're not encouraging that at all right now. On the testing side, yes, we should be, and we're finally, as you know, we got, I was able to negotiate and get 500 tests delivered to the Health Department on Saturday, and this started from a call Thursday night. And we're in the process of setting up the different sites right now, working with the state Health Department. Unfortunately, we have a culture in this country of outbreak response, but not outbreak preparedness. So a lot of the stuff that could or should have been done decade or more ago hasn't been, so we're trying to catch up right now. We do have these 500 samples that will be getting done. There are some technical issues even with this right now, but we're looking forward to moving forward. To my knowledge, nobody in the Kansas City metro area is yet testing even all of the contacts of positive cases. And so until we start doing that, and we're gearing up to do that now, we believe we're gonna be fairly soon getting up to 50 tests a day through a system through KU. But the cost of these tests, if we go to the outside of the public health system, we're talking about at least 60, and usually over $100 per test, and we don't have that budget right now.
Understood, thank you. So there was a question related to something that you answered already. I'll repeat the question just for the sake of giving it to you, but I think you've already answered it. The question was, because the 14 antibody tests are so inaccurate, how valuable is this testing? It sounds like, from what you said, the testing is valuable for research, and it may become more valuable down the line, but at the moment, its value is somewhat limited.
Right, 'cause even if you, you know, and there's always curiosity, and sometimes when we're in an unknown like this, people are grabbing for any kind of a straw to hold on to. And knowing whether you have antibodies can't change your behavior, because you don't know that you can then ignore personal protective gear. You don't know that you can't get it again and spread it to other people. So it doesn't really change any of our behavior right now, other than if you have antibodies, then you may be able to participate in some of the research activities to follow up. And so that's really the, the role right now. There are studies like in LA County recently, where they did use some testing. And if you're looking at it from a broad surveillance of estimating community prevalence, it makes some sense, because even if it's off 5% or 10%, well, your sampling structure was probably off by that much anyway in regards to your estimate range. So it would give you a sense. LA County, when they did their study, of the 8,000 tests that they had that were confirmed, their estimates from antibody testing is that they had somewhere between 30 to 50 more people that were, had been infected than what they knew about. And that's probably our big concern, is if it turns out that we've got 30 to 50 more people that are infected than we know, then as soon as we start relaxing these measures, which we all know we have to do and wanna do, we're gonna have an upsurge of an outbreak. The difference now is, we're in better position to be able to squelch those outbreaks, whether it's in a nursing home, or in a choir, or wherever it might occur, which we've had a lot of these outbreaks, even in the metro area, in those groups. We can get on it faster, because we've got more availability of testing.
Wonderful, thank you. I wanted to ask a quick follow-up before getting back into listener questions. So you had mentioned that the United States broadly is sort of better at emergency response than emergency preparedness. And based on what we've seen worldwide, there's pretty strong correlation between strong emergency preparedness instead of response, and faster recovery. So what would you recommend that citizens do to advocate for better emergency preparedness at a local and maybe even federal level, so that next time something like this happens, we can be better prepared?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question, because sometimes we don't learn from previous disasters, or that learning seems to fall off fairly quickly. The last 10 years, we have lost half of our public health workforce at the federal, state, and local level. Missouri is literally 50th, sometimes 49th in funding for local public health. The Centers of Disease Control budget has been flat to slightly going down under both parties. This is not a Republican or Democratic issue. This is, both parties have underfunded preparedness for biological agents and not understood the risk. And so, yes, we've gotta learn from this, we've gotta advocate. You know, the Department of Defense has over 100 times the budget that the CDC has, and the risk to our population, it's not proportional, our, our risk of being- Our, our risk of being attacked in a military way is not 100 times higher than our risk of being attacked with a biological agent, whether it's intentional or not. So we, we don't have our priorities straight in regards to what we're funding. We have decimated our public health lab system at the state levels across this country. So we had to turn to the private sector, which unfortunately hasn't worked with public health well, and hasn't even collected data like race. And they don't always have good address residence data. What they have is, they know who the physician office was that ordered the test, but they don't have the contact information with the patient. And so even if we get the report from that private lab, it can take us sometimes five or six calls to actually find the person, help keep them from exposing other people. And as I've said, testing in and of itself actually doesn't change healthcare. We don't have specific treatments. The only reason we actually test is to be able to isolate and to figure out who else needs to be tested and how we quarantine. The difference between South Korea and the US is pretty striking. We both had our first official case on the same day. I'm gonna wait till that, yeah, ambulance goes by. We both had our first case, basically, on the same day. We've now had over 50,000 deaths in the US. They've had 300, because they had the testing capability and the contact tracing, and they kept the outbreak under control. So, yeah, we, we, hopefully, we'll learn this from this lesson. We need at least three to five times as much money going to CDC and to state and local health departments. We have a syphilis outbreak that we can't even manage right now. We got additional resources from the city council, but we're having to divert some of that now for the COVID-19 response. I had over 9,000 hours of folks working on COVID-19 on top of our usual 110% on everything else that we're doing. So, yeah, it, it's been interesting. What I would say is, there are three things people can do. One, if you've got the resources, give to harvesters or other types of groups that can help with the travesty that's going on now with unemployment and people not even being able to feed themselves and their families. So that's first of all. Second is, to talk about the needs to strengthen our public health system, get the federal, state, and local folks to understand that need. And then, third, continue to practice as if you've got the virus yourself right now. So many people can have it without symptoms that we all need to be trying to not spread this to other folks right now.
Of course, thank you very much for that detailed answer there. So we've got three more questions that have come in. And I know we're only about eight minutes out until the end of our scheduled time here. So I wanna see if we can move through these in the time remaining. First question, Dr. Archer, this is from Marty S. Do you have plans for more testing north of the river?
Yes. We hope, and we're really very close, that any positive test that we get north of the river, we would then be contact tracing the, it could be 10 people, it could be 50 people that were exposed to that person at a level that we have concerns that they might have got the disease. And then we need to test all of those folks. So that's probably the most important piece. We will, depending on how often we're getting positive tests, and occasionally, we're gonna get these resources like we got over the weekend, to be able to test various places. And then we can move to that area and focus in that concern. We do have the capability of up to four tests an hour, where we can actually give people immediate feedback within 15 minutes of whether they're positive or not. That cap, capacity, we just received that machine in the Health Department. But we're gonna be reserving that mostly for first responders, our EMTs, paramedics, healthcare providers that may be worried that they've turned positive, so we can find that out, as well as nursing home and long-term care facility scheduled outbreaks, so that we can get our hands on that.
Thank you very much for that response. Another question here from Richard Hurtig. Outside of the healthcare environment, do gloves serve a purpose? The CDC does recommend masks, but not gloves. Should people just wash their hands before and after the activity and avoid touching their face?
Absolutely. Wash, wash, wash your hands. There's an experiment going on in Denmark now, where they're letting grade school kids come back to school and washing their hands five or six times a day extensively. They're looking at, because distance learning is harder for grade school kids, and they need more direct contact with the teacher. So they're experimenting whether they can do that. The problem with gloves, and there's even debates in the food industry over this, because people that wear gloves often don't wash their gloves or wash their hands as often. And so they may actually be spreading things that they shouldn't be. So I'm not wearing gloves when I'm out in, in public, when I have to be right now, but I do wear a mask.
Good, thank you. And then last question that's come in so far, this is also from Richard Hurtig. Is the Casey Metro area preparing for the prospective future waves of the virus? For example, COVID-19 during flu season?
Somebody's been paying attention and reading up, because I'm not even sure we'll get to the flu season before our next wave hits. So, yes, we, and, and that's part of why Kansas City went with the 15th date versus the May 3rd, because we believe that there was still, and, and we've got higher numbers of cases than some of the border suburban areas do on top of that, but that we needed to get more contact tracing capability and testing ability to be able to put these outbreaks down quickly. And that's what's gonna be very difficult in the fall, because right now, over the summer, we usually don't have too much influenza hitting. So most of the folks that are seriously ill with these types of symptoms, we can assume that they have COVID-19 even before we have the test run. In the fall, that's gonna be complicated, because assuming that, unless we have more rapid testing, is gonna be a, a challenge. We are gearing up. We have a lot of health providing students, or healthcare students that are nursing students, medical students that are in the process of being trained to volunteer to help us with some of these contact tracing and activities. It takes a, somebody that's got patient confidentiality down carefully, because you can't just have anybody talking to other folks and getting personal information from them. You've gotta have folks that actually understand that responsibility of keeping that information confidential.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Well, that's the end of our questions for today. And I know we're coming up on our time. So I just wanted to say thank you so much to Dr. Archer, and Councilwoman Hall, and Councilwoman Aneel, all three of you. Your leadership right now is greatly appreciated.
I, I did have one comment that I think's important. Obviously, wherever you go around the country, if you are in that country's, that jurisdiction, you have to follow the laws of that jurisdiction. As residents of Kansas City, Missouri, but also that are in Clay or Platte or Jackson County, you have the responsibility of following our regulations and laws, particularly while you're in our jurisdiction. So I just wanted to clarify that unfortunately, because we couldn't get everybody together and collaborate, we will have some businesses opening up just offside of our jurisdiction that are allowed to do certain things that we're not yet ready to do. I think we will be following suit with a number of these fairly soon, maybe even before May 15th. But we're, we're, we're watching this pretty carefully. And Councilwoman Hall has raised this concern. And I wanted her to know that we've heard this and that we're working on it.
Well, good, thank you, Dr. Archer. It's really important, because there's a lot of conflicting when you have, you know, seven to 12 cities in an area surrounding Kansas City, Missouri, that are in two different counties, and everybody's doing something different. We can't expect our citizens to know every minute that they're in one part of a city or another, and then make a decision based on that. And we also can't penalize our businesses who may be confused if they're open for a bit. So there's definitely a balance we have to take. So thank you for that.
Yes, indeed, thank you very much. And so I want to give the floor quickly to the councilors here to say some parting words. But I did also want to ask, Dr. Archer, if you could please pass your thanks along, or our thanks along, to all of the public health workers who are working very hard with, like, very limited means right now. We certainly appreciate all of the work that they're doing.
Yeah, I still haven't had an 80-hour work week. I got to 79 hours one week, so it's, it's been, been a stress. Thank you.
Wow, well, we, we wish you all the best as you continue to work through this, of course. So, councilors, I'll leave it to you for now.
Dr. We appreciate your commitment. I'll just say, thank you, Dr. Archer, for your joining us. That was, it's always good to hear all this information. There's so much of it. I just wanna say thanks to everybody for joining with us. Councilwoman Hall and I have decided we're gonna do this every, every Monday at 10:00 AM for the next several weeks until we can get back in to see you guys in person. And, and I, I really appreciate all the questions. It was excellent. We, we didn't know how many people we had, we would have, and we had over 50. So that, it speaks volumes to the interest in the Northland and, and what you, what you're, you wanna know. So, thank you. And Heather, your last parting words?
Well, I just wanna say, be safe, be smart, follow the guidelines, but also reach out to us and say, hey, we don't understand this, or we need help with this, or this is a suggestion we have. We're always here, even when we're not on the chat. We have lots of ways for you to get ahold of us. And Ian and I puts out our emails, so they, you know how to get ahold of us through our email, our Facebook, our Twitter, our phone numbers. So whatever you need, we're here. We're working every day, and we're grateful. We'll just put a shout-out to Diana and Marcus for arranging this with Eli. Thank you for organizing and helping and doing all the stuff behind the scenes that people don't always know, but it makes it seamless because of them. So we're really grateful, and to all you citizens, continue to stay healthy, continue to reach out, and let us know what we can be doing to help make you not only emotionally and physically healthy, but also psychologically and fiscally healthy while we're doing all the things we're doing. So thank you very much. Thank you, Eli.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, see y'all later.
Bye-bye.